Everyone's here bright and early, on time, that's great. We can start the meeting, call it to order. As you can see, our next meeting dates on the agenda. The next meeting is at the Westchester Medical Center in Valhalla. And we're gonna get a tour of the new building.
Yep.
And I'm sure that we will get corrections as to where to park, what color uniforms to wear.
(laughing).
Okay, we have the minutes of the meeting of April 2nd. Does anyone have any corrections, edits, comments?
Excuse me?
I do.
Okay.
I need to recurratively refuse myself from the Rochelle, RXR.
Oh, okay.
Because I found out after the meeting that my company is involved with the RXR project. I'm not personally, but...
Okay, I'm not sure we have enough votes then for that.
I think there were, it was eight to two.
Oh, was it eight to two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was eight to two.
We have to be, okay, good.
Okay, so we'll make that correction to the minutes. Anyone else have any comments on the minutes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve them? Do I, do I have a second? Somebody? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes passed. I would like, we have a new member. I would like to welcome Robert Barron. Maybe you can tell us a brief where you're from and...
I'm from Dobbs Ferry, although I spend a lot of time in Yonkers. And I'm very happy to be here.
Welcome. Commissioner?
So, a couple of things. Number one, last week was the Enviroathon, which is where the county Soil and Water Conservation District sponsors high school teams in a regional competition. And Fox Lane came in fourth place, but they were the highest Westchester County scoring team. So they'll actually go on to the state Enviroathon. Again, the Soil and Water Conservation District will sponsor them. One, the annual awards dinner is coming up. It's a week earlier than normal, so this time it's May 30th. It's gonna be up in North Salem. Any board members that wish to go, if you could just email Bill or I and let us know, just so we know your plans. The county will cover the cost of the board members to be able to attend. It's the awards dinner, so it's actually, you get to see some of the good projects that have been completed across the county by all the different municipalities. So it's the one time of the year we all kinda get together in a really nice, positive manner and get to have dinner together. We have had some staff changes since last we were there, we met at Hopmeister. Our longtime capital planner has retired after 33 years with the county. He follows Mark Misari, I think I told you last time, had retired. Our accountant, who'd been here for almost 35 years. So, you know, we are starting to see some changes. We are in the process right now of hiring an environmental planner up at Hilltop Manor, Hilltop Hanover, sorry. The farm, we're actually gonna put our staff person up there to kinda help the farm manager up there for a little bit. And we are also in the process of hiring a budget specialist to replace our accountant and an executive secretary, believe it or not. So he'll be the first secretary in this department for a long time. So, actually, she's gonna really be helping us a lot with the lead grants because, you know, it's the qualifying the families and stuff under that. It's, we gotta rebuild our, all of our programs. And since we last met, we did get our award letter from HUD regarding our CDBG and home grants. And we actually are getting a million dollars more than we expected under CDBG. Our CDBG grant is $3.5 million for the 25 municipalities, which is really exciting to get that going again. So we were able to go back and revisit all the comments that we got during the comment period between January and February and just recommend a whole slew of new additional projects for the different municipalities. And we, in some cases, we moved some of them up, so it created a lot more room for us to now be able to give out, make or make additional recommendations going forward. We met with the Urban County Council just like two weeks ago, maybe? And they actually are reopening the application round, so that anybody who had submitted applications in the past but wanted to switch it out if it wasn't a good application or wanted to update their application, they all have until June 28th to do that. So we're working with the different municipalities to kind of strengthen those applications. And we have reached out to the 16 municipalities who have not joined the consortium, who did not join last year. Because now is their opportunity, they have until June 14th to join for the next two years, the last two years of the three-year cycle. So we have already heard from North Salem of their expectation that they expect they're gonna join. And I'm gonna go to the village board meeting for Briar Cliff in about two weeks to speak to their board about them joining as well. So we do expect the consortium will grow, which is, which is really good news. And then last on my list is capital. May 1st was the deadline for the updates to the capital program. Applications from the different municipalities are what we call the 1920s to be submitted. Bill is...
Different departments.
Different departments, sorry. And so Bill is working through them right now to kinda get the sense it is a much better five-year plan. I know you raised that as a concern last year, but is a much, much more balanced. Still a lot for the, you know, still heavy for the first year, which would be expected, but very, very well-balanced actually going across the five-year. What we would like to do is work with your board to schedule a three-hour session to be able to work through with you all of these different applications. What we're thinking of is the first Friday in June, so it will actually be after your next meeting. I think it's Friday the 7th. We'll find some convenient place for everybody to get to. But we're thinking that, I just wanna give you that so you can schedule it now if you're gonna be available. We'll do it first thing in the morning and just, but just plan for three hours. There's five years' worth of projects to go through. And so again, the first year is still a lot of older projects, a lot of cost escalations, but, you know, going out into the additional four years, it's lots of new and different things, so...
You want to do this at a meeting other than a regular...
It will be a meeting other than, yes. Okay, so we'll do, you have your regular June meeting, which will, as we talked about, will already be at the medical center. You'll get a tour of the new ambulatory care facility that has just opened. You'll actually be able to get to see their telehealth center, which is, you don't even have to go there anymore, their virtual health center. You'll be able to get a tour of that. So yeah, we'll get you all the arrangements about where to park and everything. But we would like to do this session in addition too, so that when you come back and actually look to vote at your July meeting on the capital program, that you're, you're really having a better substance of what's in there. Okay, so Bill will reach out to you about that.
The board has an important role in this whole capital project process. And in the past, well, it's complicated.
Yes, it is.
If you don't spend a lot of time, you know, you have to, we'll just go ahead with what staff and the commissioners have suggested. And maybe we can play a more active role in, in the process, but we would have to have the knowledge in order to be able to do that, so...
Bill, I believe you're gonna be able to get materials out ahead of time.
Yeah, we're gonna be, at the June meeting, we're hoping to provide a full draft of our planning board report, which includes all the dozens and dozens of projects, but we wanna do a sit-down and talk you through each of those projects.
Right.
It's probably over 100 projects, I would say.
I know, last year was over 100 projects. This year is, I think, a little bit less, but substantial. And we hope to come armed with things like photographs and knowledge and details on each of the projects, so...
Good. Okay, on the referrals, ratification of the actions from March 16th through April 15th, 2019. Anyone have any comments or questions on...
Excuse me. Can you further conversation on flats and white plains in regard to Maplewood Golf Course, which I know is here in the area?
Well, the letter went out and there was a long discussion. And the letter certainly mentioned the county's interest in this because of the Maplewood Golf Course drainage project that's underway. Do we know if the city of White Plains, it was on their agenda last night for approval, and it seemed to have gotten sign-off from all relevant county, city agencies and departments? I don't know, we don't know whether they voted on it last night.
But we also think it were revised plans, right? But we're not sure what the revisions show.
Right, I reached out to the city to get, to get information and I wasn't responded to, so...
There was nothing in, I mean, there were about 50 pages of city department comments. None of them really dealt with the specific issues that we brought up, other than saying, you know, they have to have a drainage plan satisfactory to the city, you know, in general. Not anything really specific. Our letter was in the record.
Right, right.
So, you know, it was there, whether they in fact made any changes regarding the site plan layout that we talked about and the interest in the Maplewood Golf Course drainage. I guess we'll find out, maybe it's in today's paper or tomorrow's paper.
Yeah, I have two on the Yonkers. One is Alexander Street property. Is there any indication of what they're doing to make sure that the risk front area is accessible and inviting people who are not in their residences?
Accessible, yes. That's one of the requirements for building there. Inviting, well, we had some comments about whether or not it would work with the Haverhill Park, which is next door. And we, the site plan was just conceptual because they're going for a PUD special permit. They're gonna come back again for the site plan. So, you know, it's not, it's not 100% what they're, what they're doing. So we made some comments, you know, kinda early on, that we want it connected to Haverhill Park. We wanted, we made a lot of technical comments about how we thought it could be more inviting. So when it comes back for site plan review, we'll get to see if they, I mean, my guess is they'll probably make some changes between now and then, and then we'll get another chance to comment in the future.
Have there been any public hearings going on in this?
Right, yeah, there was a public hearing about that special permit, that they, that the city council had to issue. Now it'll come back from the Yonkers Planning Board and it'll be more site plan-specific type comments. And that, they should be referring that to us.
It would be hard to believe that they would interfere with the Riverwalk concept that the county has had in its policies for years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in the city's master plan for the area, it's, it's in their policies and our policies. I can't imagine why they would not.
Yonkers has a history of finding the walling off of the river from everybody except the owners of the water. And they've been fighting this since I can remember. And what about the Bronx River comments? What have they done to make sure that the flood, that flooding isn't gonna be an issue there? That's a very flood-prone area.
Well, I mean, this came in for area variances. And the main comment that we made was that they're going for so many variances that the building is probably too big for the site. It's not clear whether the city will grant them these variances. So it, if the variances are granted, then it goes forward for site plan comments and whatnot. I mean, this, I mean, the site would be completely built out, so any rain that lands on the site would go down into the Bronx River. I mean, it's very close to there.
Storms and floods like that.
Right.
I mean, the last storm was devastating, just devastating.
The Bronx River right near there is in a concrete channel that's like kinda squeezed in between the train station and the parkway.
Any other comments, questions?
Thanks.
Sure. I have a motion to approve the referrals.
I'll move.
Second? All in one.
(laughing).
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. I know we have some time-sensitive issues on matters for board action, so which one should go first?
We can start with Elmwood.
Start with Elmwood? Okay, on the Elmwood Country Club letter, which you got, I'm going to recuse myself. I probably will have no connection with it, but I was part of a team that submitted a proposal to be a consultant to the town on this project. I don't think they're gonna get it, but I'm gonna recuse myself. So, Dwight, do you think?
Thank you for sending out, I didn't realize you had so many golf courses.
Yeah.
I really had, I thought maybe there's 15 or something, but this was huge.
Yeah.
So thanks for doing that. So I guess losing part of a golf course is not the end of the world. The letter that Bill drafted and sent out...
No, Lucas drafted.
Lucas.
Bill sent it.
I just happened to mail it out, so...
Anyway, I, I, thanks for both of you guys involved. Anyway, as the, I thought the letter was fine. It raised a number of good issues. You wanna just go back over any part of those, Lucas? Or highlights for folks that didn't have a chance to read the letter?
I mean, basically, you know, at this point, it's, these comments are very preliminary. The town has declared lead agency, but they expect that this is going to go, it will be given a positive declaration under SEACR and that there'll be a scoping document in the EIS. So there's gonna be many, many more times to comment on this referral. So we just kind of kept the comments, for this letter to be kind of more general. You know, the fact that, we highlighted the fact that it may not be fully consistent with the county planning board's policies in the sense that you're directing all this development outside of a downtown instead of towards an established center. The layout of the development's not ideal, you know, there's not a lot of connectivity with the adjacent roadways. There was an issue with there being no affordable housing proposed. There's, they want to restrict this development to seniors only, 55 and older, with no, no one under the age of 19 residing in the development for more than 120 days. And also, they're proposing substantial recreational component to the site, I suppose in exchange for a large density increase that the applicant is requesting. And so there is a question as to whether or not the town wants these facilities, since the applicant wants to deed them over to the town.
Okay, we got a detailed presentation, it's a good summary. Any other questions regarding the letter on Elmwood Country Club site?
Just that you repeat, they wanna deed the recreational facilities to the county.
To the town, not the county, yeah, the town.
The town.
The town pool and like the...
No, not the pool area, but there's, they're creating a new ball field and it's pretty much adjacent to the town's existing recreation facilities right there. But again, it's, it would add a burden to the town to then have to maintain those facilities. So we just wanna be sure that the town's on board with that.
We don't know, yeah.
Can I have a, sorry? You're in charge.
Well, we, we need to authorize the letter that's already been drafted.
Right.
So I think we'd like to move, if we send out the letter to understand the rule.
Second?
I'll, all in favor?
Aye. I recuse. Okay, thanks, Dwight. The next is SY031 tide gate replacement and regulator improvements, Yonkers Sanitary Sewers District.
So, you know, right to the next slide.
Here we go.
So, this project is basically for tide gate regulator replacing in the city of Yonkers. There are five tide gate regulators throughout the city. We look to the next slide, but actually, as you know, that's, that's the regulator right there, tide gate right there.
Can you tell us what a tide gate regulator is?
Sure, basically, it's, it's basically a one-way valve for flow to the Hudson, so the Hudson doesn't blow back into our sewer system. This is for the combined sewer area in Yonkers. Next slide. The, there are five of them, La Martine, Ashburn, Wells End, Main Street and Pier Street. The, you can just really flip through it.
Sure.
Just give you like an idea of where they're, you know, where they're located, La Martine, and just, you know, you can kinda, just kinda...
Here you go.
Go, go ahead through them. Most of these, three of the regulators, Ashburn, Main and Wells are located in the streets at the intersections with Alexander Avenue. The, there is a few concerns when you're doing this kind of project because they're located at intersections in busy areas. So we're looking to have some of this work done either at night or on the weekends. So right now, the estimated total cost for the entire project, we're saying is approximately $4.7 million.
Right.
And we're looking for accelerated procurement of the designer for them to get going. The, this was gonna be a, a long-term project for us. However, the EPA, I'm sorry, the DBC, EPA, sorry, DPA came out, did an inspection, found out that those regulators are, and tide gates are leaking. So we need to advance the, the work. So they gave us a consent order, I don't know if it's a final consent order, assuming it's, I think it's just a grant consent order right now, for all construction to be completed for all five of these by the end of 2020. So because of that, we're looking for, again, accelerated procurement of EBR, who's, would be our consultant to design these. Maybe we can even procure some of the tide gates in advance of the contract in order to streamline the project. Again, the end of 2020 is really not that far away to get this done. Shouldn't be that difficult, however, because of the locations and because the Pier Street is, might be a problem because it's not far from MTA railroad tracks and above those train stations. So we have to record, you know, we're gonna have to coordinate all that work with the MTA. Also, here's the Pier Street one. Some of these, again, it's, it's concrete work, patching, paving, replacing the gates. Some of these manways, two of them are square, we'll have to replace them with our circular, you know, manhole covers. And that's essentially what the project is. Again, it's about $4.7 million, we're asking for all the money upfront, which we don't have to go back. And hopefully we can get the, the designer on board right away, start getting the design, start buying our materials and get the project going.
So, you said the tide gates, are they all custom designed or are there any that are manufactured?
I think they're, they're all custom.
They have to be custom designed?
Yes.
Is this a...
And they're, they're about, just, you know, they're at, they're at 25 to 30 years old. So they're basically at the end of their useful life anyway. Again, this was a project that was gonna be pushed out a few years, but now we have to move it forward.
Was this in a previous capital budget in out years and now it's moving forward? Or is it brand new?
We were gonna put it into this, we were gonna put it into, we, we...
This year.
This year, for the out years. And EPA said now they think that I should do anything.
Guess we don't have too much choice. (laughing).
But, I have this question of the EPA, almost everything we get from the EPA goes through the DBC. Most of the time, that's the way that things are communicated or violations are written or whatever. How come the EPA, I just haven't heard of them being actively coming around and doing stuff like that?
Yeah, I, most of, most of the stuff goes through the DBC.
They've actually, they've...
They've had it both ways.
They've actually come through and told all the councils and districts over the last few years. Yonkers was the last one that they've done, so they, they've come through, they've come finding. It's really more a check on us, they, are you doing what you're supposed to be doing? Can you do a better job at what you're doing? It's a check on the DBC as well.
There was other things that came out of their inspection that were handling internally. However, this is the project that was generated from that, so that's what was concerned, does because of the timeframe.
We have a resolution to authorize the capital project report for this particular project. Can I have a motion? Have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. The next is RB131 Theodore Friend Avenue, Ry... Okay, that's me. That's gonna do it, okay.
This is a resurfacing project that originally started out in 2016. Has a North Street and Central Avenue. And, you know, as we went forward over the last, you know, almost four years or so, looking at it, Central Avenue to Purchase Street is also suffering the same fate, the surface layer of, as well, you know, it's basically a sandwich, a base binder and top cover. The top coating is about two inches thick. We would mill that off, replace that with new top coating after fixing all of the cracks and seams. So you'll get reflective cracking of the new material, curb work, disabled access on the sidewalks. Tactical script, a whole series of federal changes that have come out the last few years. So this will be the latest standards for there is access to the sidewalk and road. And the request is to add 650,000 that was originally out in an outer year or in the future somewhere, so that we go back to the total of 2,265,000. Now what we need is to do the whole stretch there, all the way from North Street to Purchase Street with one shot. Keep that economy at scale and doing it that way. And we would basically just traumatize the neighborhood once, instead of trying to do this again another year or two. So the pavement conditions are not quite as bad, you use what's called the PCI, pavement condition index. And the last time we had this done was the winter part of 2016. And that was a 63. Normally they'll start looking at things when they get below 70. So 63 is not in the realm of, you know, bad, using a...
What does 63 mean?
It's a scale that's used from 1 to 100 of condition of the pavement, zero being a dirt road and, you know, under being a smoothly paved surface. So, you know, usually, you know, we like to see them up above 70 and when you start to see them go down. Also, just another factor is the rate of decline, which is related to both the conditions, if there's poor drainage underneath the road or heavy truck traffic that can cause deterioration completely. So we look back, do this every three years, so we look back at 2013 and the city. Uh-oh, this thing is going downhill quickly. So that, that is another factor in our decision to go ahead and do that in our second section. And as for the money, do the project at once. The engineering work is not that much more extensive to do everything at once as opposed to coming back another time, a year or so later or two years later. So ordinarily, if it was just a standalone piece, it might last another year or two, but all these factors considered, it's, we're all...
And this second stretch that's being added actually takes it all the way down to our brand-new affordable housing senior building, which is at 240 Theodore Friend?
Right at the bottom there?
Sorry, 250, yes, thank you. And I have to tell you, because of the sewer work that was done, where Con Edison sewers got disconnected, they had to dig up the road. And then we had to dig up the road after that to be able to put some drainage in the road. So the particular stretch from North Street, the last stretch is really, has been dug up now twice in the last two years. Yeah, so that's why it really, there's an added urgency, not just to the PCI, but it's just, it was not repaved well in terms of the, you know, the short-term work that was done to address the drainage and sewer issues.
And that was always the first part of the project from 2016, but now that got so beat up, so is it. It also put off the repaving for good reason.
Right, right.
So now a lot of things came together and now that it's time to do that section, the road section in North Street and Central, we should really just touch on that to Purchase Street.
So you check to make sure that there's no fiber optics going in, that the water main is good, that the gas mix is...
We do what's called a code rule 73, which is required. So all underground utilities have to be located and we have, you know, we have to do that within 48 hours of when we actually do construction, but of course we do that earlier. But in this case, very little underground work would be done. Some catch bases work, some manhole castings, occasional drainage, catch bases. But for the most part, it's milling just that top layer of material off.
Yeah, we're getting it, making sure it's not gonna have to dug up again.
What she's saying is that, if you're...
For the water main.
Oh, yeah, no, the other utility.
If the water main is good, it goes...
Well, we coordinate with Con Ed and, and anybody else that owns utilities. Of course, there's always, you know, there's certain, certainly cases where six months after we finish, they come back. The, the difficulty for somebody doing that is they then have to pave curb to curb for the section that they disturb. They can't just have a scar down in the middle of the road.
They don't make a patch on it anymore?
Yeah, so it behooves them, and we tell them way in advance, it's kinda like getting married, speak now, if we were holding a peace, you know, do it now because we're coming in. And once we get going, then if you come back six months later, you're paving that whole thing at tremendous expense.
Right.
Because we don't wanna see a scar in a brand-new road that we just passed, has a 10 to 12-year lifespan. So, so absolutely right. It's, I wouldn't say that has never happened.
Don't get the fiber optics to peak there.
Yeah, well, no, that's true. Theoretically, everything that they have is in there, but I certainly wouldn't say that it doesn't happen exactly.
Is there a type of ZAR out there that controls all the bodies?
No, it's our road and they, they're there... No, it's, it's our road and they, uh, they're there, um, basically, uh, through our, the kindness of our heart. So we give them the right to use the corridor the right way. And they get permits when they, uh, need to excavate or when they need to put it there.
Right.
And we can actually assign a corridor if there's, uh, they're getting into too much, you know, that there's a sewer line, uh, in the road that usually has precedence because you can't move that due to its gravity that, as opposed to gas, which is much shallower or.
Right.
Or, uh, water, which is under pressure and you can mediate, you know, around and, and the least, uh, um, the least of, of the problems are conduits for communication. They can almost go anywhere.
Right.
So once we work out, here's where you're going. It's usually not what they asked for in the first place, but that's what they end up with. And then, uh, you know, that, so that kinda works itself out. Been doing this a long time.
Right.
Uh, you know, but, um, to your point, this happens. Sometimes they find that some new customer moved in, a new building, a year after we do this and we need a connection, uh, somewhere. So they have to do it. But then they have to go fifty feet on either side of that and go curb to curb and that would be very expensive, but, uh, hopefully it's for them, they have to do their own. You know, so.
The action, action before us is to modify a, the project that was previously approved, extending it further now. So can I have a motion to authorize this work in the capital budget? Okay, second, one day. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, the last capital project we have is R B one seventy-one of Main Street in Eastchester.
And, and Tucker.
This is a combination of two county roads, County Road thirty-seven, Main Street, and then another little piece that fits down like a V is, uh, County Road sixteen and eleven. Uh, this is a project that has been on our radar screen since twenty fifteen and, uh, now it's, um, something that we're taking a, a lot closer look at just in the recent past. And, um, this is a little bit more involved as far as, um, the roadway itself. There are some areas where we have to do, uh, reconstruction of the road. It's not just a top coat, milling, paving, all that other part. So, you know, as we started getting, um, more, uh, interested in the project because it's coming up, it's time to do, um, it looks like it needs more work than was originally anticipated some four years ago. And, um, you know, of course, we're projecting it out to the next, uh, year, two thousand twenty, because this is, uh, for the, uh, calendar year, two thousand twenty, we would, um, actually start working on the design the end of this year and, uh, have plans to start serving to the way out of the spring of, uh, one thousand twenty, the blacktop plants open around the first week in April. And we would try to actually, uh, do the bulk of the constructions during the summer. The traffic control there also was more of a problem than we had initially anticipated. So you can't, um, go through this thing like, you know, it's in the middle of a farm somewhere. So you have to do it in section. It's a little more painstaking, but, um, you know, certainly you can do it, it's just that, uh, that has to be a little bit more expensive. So the, um, project is, uh, you know, uh, well, going up by seven hundred and twenty-five thousand in our estimation. And that the total would now be one million seven hundred and twenty-five.
Can you just describe the two distinct streets and trade it, um, enhancing elements that are included in the area?
Yes, again, as the other, um, road, uh, project head and as all of our road projects, wherever there are sidewalks, um, that are existing, we typically do not do sidewalks because we're not in the business of maintaining the sidewalks. So a town, a village, a city, um, if we had, um, a project, um, sometimes they'll ask for upgrades to granite curving or, um, they'll want the sidewalk and then we'll have a contractor do that, uh, where they basically kind of pay for that, you know, they are sort of close to that. Because they're going to be responsible for everything you can think of, snow and ice control, somebody slips and falls five years from now and they sue whoever owns the sidewalk we built and created. So there are a number of, uh, things like that on every project. I don't remember specifically, you know, just where they are on this one, but, uh, there are at least a half a dozen, um, crossings where we were, uh, going to install the, uh, disabled, uh, uh, any type of access ramps.
Very much, much like that.
Uh, yes, yes. And in some cases, we're putting in a, uh, a pair, concrete pair for the bus shelter. So there are some stops that are stops and wherever, uh, there's enough, uh, this, uh, business associated with that, you know, it's one or two people, uh, standing there at a bus, at a stop, which is just a sign along the side of the sidewalk. Um, it's, it's not worthwhile for us to go and create a shelter, but, uh, but wherever we have large numbers of people, and this is a main street, so there are, um, a couple. The, uh, the other thing with the bus shelters is our contractor, which is Signal Corporation, we have a company that has tried to contract with us, they provide the advertising, but they provide the shelters and the advertising. They provide money to the county and the municipality, um, you know, in the ways we share and the, uh, revenue that they receive, as well as they are responsible for the maintenance of the bus shelter. Uh, and that includes lighting and, uh, cleaning and, uh, even snow and ice removed inside the shelter, um, where the municipality does the shoveling from the road curbside into that.
Again, this is an amendment.
The consideration of them receiving that.
This is an amendment to the, uh, capital budget.
May I just, yeah, a couple of questions, because this is my district. Uh, Damon Mark, county legislator. Um, are you saying that, so the bus stops are gonna have sort of those concrete slabs that you sometimes, on roadway, that you sometimes see for, at bus stops?
Yes.
So that's what you're saying. Okay. And, and could you just give a little bit more detail on which parts require reconstruction and, well, why some parts of the project don't need it and, 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 and why you have to do it all at once? So this was, I was told this was gonna start in twenty nineteen.
Uh, no, we're asking for the funding in twenty twenty, so we really can't.
Okay, because last, last, we spoke, we spoke about twenty nineteen.
Well, twenty nineteen is pretty much, uh, over as far as.
Okay.
Letting contracts and getting, just to give you kind of a rough time frame, the blacktop plants will close right around the first of December. But the effective, um, you know, cycle of being able to put that material down usually ends prior to that. It has to be forty degrees and rise in the beginning of the day before you can even start paving. So usually, you know.
If you just, I'm sorry, because I know you have time constraints here, but like.
So, so this is a twenty twenty.
Like thirty seconds on.
When are we moving up to twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
For design.
Yeah.
The, the road itself wouldn't be paved till the summer, give or take, up twenty twenty.
Right. So just briefly, which parts require the whole reconstruction and why would that, why would that be?
Well, just remember the, the Medland Avenue piece is in poorer shape than the rest of it. So for the most part, it's milling and paving, but there are some areas, we have drainage, so there's catch bases that need to be replaced, what's called castings, the casting units have to be excavated and then you pretty much have to start doing a lot of remediation around that in the, in the roadway. So.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a resolution regarding this capital project?
I'll move.
Second? Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, uh, first of all, we have two guests here from the Ankers Planning Board. I think this may be.
Harrison.
Harrison. Pardon me. I don't know what, where that, I don't know where that came from.
And their planner is beautiful.
Uh, and, and their planner is here, uh, maybe you could, guys, uh, one is obviously familiar to us, Joe Stow, the other, Tom Huesler, and Pat Cleary, uh, the town planner. And they're here, we had a presentation on the Teardrop area in Harrison, uh, several meetings ago. And all of the developments that's going there, which is very hot for development and our ideas about interaction of the various developments. And, uh, we sent a letter to the, uh, town and the planning board indicated, uh, that they would be interested in participating in, uh, the review of this and, and, uh, if I, maybe I can ask them if they'd like to come up and sit at the table with us and.
We're gonna have Lucas go through to kind of set the stage for what we've been looking at. So let's do that first.
Okay, first Lucas will do a summary of, uh, his presentation from the previous meeting in the Teardrop area in Harrison, not Goff.
Okay, cool. Uh, good morning again. Um, this is just a, uh, a quick overview of a presentation that the county planning board, um, looked at about two months ago, uh, where we just had a discussion about the, um, Platinum Mile, uh, Westchester Avenue corridor. So just a quick overview of what the area is. The, um, you know, the Platinum Mile is basically the, uh, the boundary between White Plains and Harrison. Um, it goes along, uh, two eighty-seven with, um, Westchester Avenue being a set of one-way streets on both the north side and the south side of two eighty-seven. The, one of the defining characteristics of this corridor is the fact that, you know, Westchester Avenue is, um, you know, one directional this way and one directional this way. And it requires, um, a series of bridges to get across the highway. So there is a difficulty with connecting, um, you know, properties on the north and south sides of the, of the corridor. Uh, just a quick overview of the different areas. Uh, this is the, uh, western end of the, uh, the corridor. You can see this is the edge of downtown White Plains here. So, uh, Westchester Avenue is more or less just an arterial that goes past the mall and through, uh, through the center White Plains and it splits into these one-way pairs right about here where, um, you know, you can go, uh, towards Portchester, uh, eastbound or you're going back to White Plains westbound on the other side of the highway. And in this area, on the Harrison side, you mostly have, well, you have the, um, hamlet of, uh, West Harrison, um, over here, which is mostly residential. But then beyond that, this is Anderson Hill Road going out to, um, Purchase College. Here you start to have, um, like office campus environments that are kind of closer in to the roadway. The main exception is the Fordham University Satellite Campus, which is back here. This has a long driveway that goes up. Um, but this other stuff is pretty close to the road. On the White Plains side, you've got two larger, um, office park environments that are again close to the road, uh, with a residential area that's wedged in between. Um, moving, uh, east, this is the, uh, the Teardrop area, which is where a lot of the, um, recent referral activity that the county planning board has reviewed is taking place. Uh, the defining characteristics of this area is that it's, it's shaped like a, kinda like a, like a water drop or it, that works, so it gets that name, the Teardrop, but it's hemmed in by highways on all sides. So six eighty-four is coming down from Brewster and then you can split here to go, um, westbound on two eighty-seven or over to the Hutch, Hutchinson River Parkway and, um, eastbound two eighty-seven. Uh, and then two eighty-seven itself is down here on the southern and western battery, um, with, um, everything kind of inside. So these red lines here are, uh, basically dead-end roads that kind of go in from, um, Westchester Avenue to provide access to all of these sites that are within this, this Another, uh, characteristic of the area is that Manhattanville Road comes in from the east. Now Manhattanville Road has, uh, direct access to six eighty-four here with this diamond-shaped interchange. But, um, you, it, it basically ends, um, adjacent to this other road here, which is called Corporate Park Drive, but you can't go through it. It's gated off and, you know, it, it could be a real easy shot to go through, but you, you can't do that. Um, then moving, uh, further, uh, east, this is the last, uh, segment, um, before Westchester Avenue leaves the two eighty-seven corridor and becomes a, a two-directional, um, arterial road towards Ry Brook and Portchester. So here it's a, a lot lower density. Um, you've got, um, you know, on the White Plains side, you, you don't have a, well, actually you have Maplemore Golf Course over here. And you have, um, eleven thirty-three Westchester Avenue, which is the, um, uh, referral, the, large referral we reviewed last month. And then over here, you have, um, some lower density office park environments, including here at the end of, um, the split here, this is a, a Purchase, um, Corporate Park where there's a lot of, um, medical offices and things like that. And then down here, you have the, uh, the famous Taj Mahal, um, uh, development. Okay, so let's focus in on the Teardrop. Now these are, um, uh, all the referrals that we've received, uh, in recent years, not recent, in recent months. And this is, uh, you can see this is a real hotbed of, um, of development activity. So, uh, the, um, there's two projects that are, well, first off, there is a project that was recently constructed and this is the, um, Lifetime Fitness, uh, it's a gym facility. Um, but in addition to that, there is, um, two projects that are under construction. The first is a, uh, a four hundred twenty-one unit apartment complex called The Caraway and that's at one oh three, one oh five Corporate Park Drive, which is the road that comes up this way. Um, this used to be apart, um, uh, office buildings and they've been demolished and now there's apartment complexes being constructed. Uh, similarly, um, there's a Wegman supermarket being constructed, um, at the end of the same road, Corporate Park Drive. This used to be another office, um, development. It was, uh, demolished and now a Wegman supermarket is under construction. In addition to that, uh, one oh four Corporate Park Drive, kind of in between the two, um, properties is being considered for, um, medical office space. It's an existing office building. It would be converted, slightly expanded, uh, to have a medical office use instead of a regular office use. And, uh, finally, this is on a different street, although it abuts, um, The Caraway, there's another, um, residential development proposed and this is at three Westchester Park Drive, so a different road that starts out here. This would, is again a similar project, uh, demolishing an existing office building, building a four hundred and fifty unit, uh, apartment building. Now this one we have just received, just so you know, we just received the draft E I S for it. So, uh, you can expect that, um, you know, perhaps at your next meeting, we may have a presentation or at least a letter that we can show you, um, before it goes out. Uh, so with, um, with this, all this development, there is a number of issues that, you know, we've been highlighting in every review that, uh, we've been doing. First is, is that, as I pointed out before, um, the Teardrop area has basically, you know, dead-end streets that service all of the, um, all of the development sites. So this is, uh, Westchester Park Drive, this is Corporate Park Drive, and then this is, uh, Red Oak Lane. And all of these roads, you have to go in and then back out again to, um, get to the individual sites. Um, one issue is, is as you're, as you're changing the mix of uses within the Teardrop area, there may be need, there may be a need or a desire to walk between the sites. Um, the issue is, is that a lot of these, um, streets were constructed without sidewalks initially. And so this is a, an issue where if someone wants to walk from the gym to a, an apartment or from an apartment to the supermarket, um, in, not in every case is there a, a sidewalk that would allow them to do that. Um, also, um, the access between the sites is kind of complicated thanks to the, um, the one-way, I mean, the dead-end road configuration. For, let's, an example is, is if you wanted to go from one of the apartment buildings to the Wegmans. So if you're here at three Westchester Park Drive and you wanna go to the Wegmans and if you're gonna drive it, well, you have to go out and all the way down and back. This is basically four traffic lights you'll have to go through. Meanwhile, it's, it's not a very far walk or bike ride, but if there's no connection to get there, this is how you're gonna have to go. Um, that's the same situation if you wanted to go from the Lifetime Fitness, um, uh, site here to Wegmans or to this apartment building. So if you lived here, you're right next to here, but you wanna come back from the gym to your apartment, you gotta go all the way around. Um, what about the pediatric facility right here to the Renaissance Westchester Hotel? You know, a lot of times when, um, kids are in these pediatric health facilities, parents might be traveling, they may be staying in a nearby hotel while their child stays at the facility. Um, so in this case, you have a, a hotel that directly abuts the, um, pediatric facility, but if you wanna travel between the two, it's very onerous. Um, really long, at least four traffic lights, um, and you can see one building from the other.
There used to be some cut-throughs there, but they're.
I'm sure there is. I'm sure somebody has cut through the woods and, uh, you know, I'm sure somebody's done it.
There you go. I'm sure there are.
Um, yeah, another thing is that a truck and vehicle access from six eighty-four, because of this, um, because there's this closure between Manhattanville Road and Corporate Park Drive, all trucks coming from the north would have to go around and then up the individual roadways. Um, transit access is unfortunately very, also very difficult to provide to, um, some of these sites. Uh, you know, we, the county offers a lot of transit services along this corridor, but as the uses change and as like the, the, the peak hour of usage for some of these uses, you know, and the transit demand changes, it, it could be a tricky situation to figure out. Um, the, you can see here that these are the, um, these bus stops here denote the, um, the regular, uh, fixed route service that goes along Westchester Avenue. So it's like the, the three, the twelve, the thirteen, um, is it sixty?
The sixty is the Mars Express service, uh, peak directional.
Okay. And also the I-Bus from Connecticut and, and the Leprechaun connection and whatnot. Um, so that's what, what these stops signify. Um, so that's what, what these stops signify. The blue lines that kind of go into the individual roads that go into the teardrop, now, these are loop shuttles. So these are shuttles that the county runs that, um, meet up with trains at the White Plains Train Station, and they're designed to take people from the train station to these sites. If you look at the schedules, the schedules are mostly set up around peak hours. So if an office commuter is coming from Manhattan, they take the train, they get off on the bus, the bus takes them to their office park where they work, and then later in the day the, it's in the reverse. So it's set up for offices, but now that the uses are changing from office to residential or office to supermarket, um, you know, is this, is this gonna work with this particular system? With the fixed route, uh, stops, i- it presents a challenge because if you're dependent on using the fixed route, you know, you're, one, um, for one trip, you're gonna be on the right side of the highway, and then for the other trip, the other part of the day, you're gonna be on the wrong side of the highway. So suppose you're going from, um, this is the end of, uh, this is where the Lifetime Fitness site is. So if you work at Lifetime Fitness and you live in White Plains, you're gonna have to take the bus over here, but then you have to go up here to this bridge, cross over, walk back down, then walk up the hill. Um, you know, in the evening, when you want to go back, you know, to White Plains, it's a little bit easier, you just walk down the road and catch the bus and go to White Plains. But the issue is that, uh, there's like no sidewalks in any of these areas. So when you're doing this circuitous path to get from one stop to the other, you're, the only places with sidewalks are the bridges. Um, the sides of the road on, um, Westchester Avenue don't have sidewalks, and like I mentioned before, some of these roads going up into the site don't, don't have sidewalks either. Um, you know, depending on where you work, it could be better or worse. This is if you happen to work over here on, uh, Red Oak Lane. This is a much longer walk to get to, um, the bus stop that goes in the eastbound direction. The westbound direction, um, you know, it's, it's on the right side of the highway, but you still have to walk up the road. So sometimes, you know, I've measured it out, like, sometimes you're talking about a three-quarter of a mile walk from a sub, from a bus stop to a job site on roads with no sidewalks, um, to get to and from some of these sites. Here's a picture of what these people have to face. Um, I took this picture over at the, this was at eleven thirty-three Westchester Avenue when I was doing, um, a site visit, but these were transit riders walking from a bus stop to their jobs. And as you can see, there's no, there's a, the edge line, the guardrail, I mean, I don't know where you would, I guess, well, I guess you just do it, right? Also, the, the closure on, um, Manhattanville Road also presents an obstacle. I mean, there's currently never been bus service that goes through here, but you certainly couldn't have it if you wanted to, if the road is closed. Also, as we look into the future with things like rideshare services and, and whatnot, it's a lot more efficient if, um, vehicles can go through here, even, you know, we can understand that, you know, if you didn't want to open this road up for all traffic, but if some traffic, like transit providers or, or, um, rideshare services could go through there, it could make, um, providing transportation a lot more efficient. So just, just to highlight, oh, another recent referral, um, just to end with this. This is a, uh, a referral that we received a couple of months ago, and just to let you know that, that these issues are, they happen beyond just the teardrop. And, and this was a particular referral which we reviewed where there was, um, there's two existing, um, office, this is out here on the, uh, the western end of the corridor. There's two existing office buildings that have been here for a long time, and the problem was that people looking to drive into this place would blow right by the driveway, and then they would turn to the other place, and then it would be, they'd be in the wrong place. So since they were owned by the same person, they wanted to connect them with a, um, a, you know, an internal driveway so that when this happens, you could do that. But imagine if they weren't owned by the same person, and you couldn't do that, and if you blow past this, you'd have to go like, I don't know, you'd have to go all the way into downtown White Plains to turn around and come back, and you had to go back around on the other side of the bridge and go, it would be, uh, people would just give up, or (laugh) or they would do it, but they would be like a half hour late to their, um, to their appointment or whatever. And, um, another issue is, believe it or not, back in the early nineties, I had a temp job doing data entry, one of these, uh, when I was in college, in, uh, one, in this particular building. And another issue I wanted to highlight is, even though these buildings are close to the street, that the transit access is still not the greatest. This is the bus stop that we have, but as you can see, the site has, the owners of the site have done nothing to connect this bus stop to the front of the building. So, you know, back when I was working here, you know, twenty-five years ago, I got off the bus here and I hacked my way through landscaping to get into the building, and that's just what you have to do. Um, so, you know, improvements to, within these sites is also important to, um, to, uh, promote bus access. And I think that's my, oh, yeah, that's my last slide, so are there any?
Thank you, Lucas, that was good. Just, um, in general, obviously, all these approvals are, the municipality has the final say. We are just trying, as the county, to provide a regional outlook to maybe, uh, maybe approve the interconnections in this particular location. So maybe if you guys would like to come up and sit at the table?
Tom, why don't you come sit here? Sorry. Just pull chairs up.
No questions.
And I don't know if you'd like to start with any, uh, responses or comments or...
Thanks again for having us in. So I, I'll just, Lucas's presentation is for, but I, I, I've often been a little bit taught from the challenges that we were facing all along and how we've been dealing with this, and we basically share the same concerns that you do. All of the referrals that we, we perceive from you have sort of emphasized the same issues we're dealing with, but fundamentally, your challenge, so number one, Lucas appropriately noted that you kind of look like a water drop. We very quickly called it a teardrop because we had problems with that. The short statistic that we'd like to share is that something like sixty percent of the town's tax base can be defined a mile, and by the early two thousands, it was eighteen percent. So we were shedding fear from this area, so the teardrop name kind of stuck. The other problem was inherently when, basically, the Toll Brothers built that area, there was not a lot of foresight in terms of connectivity, and in fact, isolated office parks were the thing, big giant. Parking lots in isolation, that was what sold in nineteen seventy-five when our offices were done. So we, we, we had the built-in limitations that we had to overcome, not the least of which is the, the one-way circulation of Westchester Avenue, but just the design and isolation of these areas. Second challenge that we've had to deal with, and Lucas appropriately pointed it out, is why aren't we making connections? There seems to be obvious areas where we could make connections. While the teardrop is isolated, it's next to a very affluent portion, purchase, um, of the town, and in the eighties, when all of that developed and was occurring, the folks in Purchase basically said, "We don't want those folks coming into our residential area." So we want to make sure that that is, that connection is prevented from ever occurring.
It wasn't even affordable housing that they were objecting to.
I'm surprised, but, um, so what happened at the time was there was mitigation, and there was a settlement which the town is party to that requires that road to be closed. That entity hasn't backed away from that position, although the town is very willing to back away from that position where we are today. It's sort of hoping that the transformation of the, of this area, in particular, uses like, like this, next to folks in Purchase saying, "It's not such a bad idea to make that connection." So hopefully that resolves itself over time. But the inherent problem we're dealing with is the design of the city. The, what the town had done, and from the background, was in two thousand and twelve, the town updated its comprehensive plan and said, "We had a teardrop that looked crying about that, and we need some help." And the comprehensive plan basically said, "We're looking to change, we're looking to accommodate changes of use from these office parks to something else." We didn't quite document what the something else could be, but we said, "Come on in and talk to us and we'll see what we can do," and we have the ability to make modifications. Instead, we've got a teardrop that's without any affecting folks, and probably the likelihood of success. Very soon after that, the first one, as we just pointed out, was Lifetime Fitness, which is, if you remember, the old Gannett printing plant, the old Gannett facility for Lifetime Fitness came in, and that was really the finger out of the night. When Lifetime came in, and the town was able to process that application very, very promptly, another year from beginning to starting construction, they were in it. So that proved to others that this might be an area where we can do things. So then, the others started coming in with ideas that required us to make modifications to the zone, which involved this park zoning and, uh, residential use of office parks, and we allowed multi-families, we allowed retail use. So all of that zoning was put in place, and that brought in the Wegman supermarket, if you all heard about that, brought in Toll Brothers' new project, that brought in Trammell Pro Residential, and the other project, I'm too much of a cop out. So there was a lot of issues that needed to be sort of addressed. Circulation is one of the most significant. So every county referral, you've got to do better with circulation. Every planning board review requires circulation. One thing Lucas didn't point out is the other factor is topography. So virtually all of those one, those dead-end cul-de-sacs are rough hills. So not only is it three-quarters of a mile, it's a quarter-mile pump hill. So there's a, there's a significant issue of making those connections between, similarly, goes down, goes through Wegmans Brookset up the other side to connect the hotel to the medical units on the other side. So inherent problems and limitations, what we've been doing is compelling the developers to solve these problems, to get together and work together. So all those private, those roads and town roads that we sort of always let the private developers, the office parks maintain them by and large, what we've been telling the private developers is, "You guys all have to work together, sharing these roads, and work together not only with climate snow and going puddle, but facilitating connectivity." And what we have so far been very successful doing is getting these folks to talk. It's always been the second component of our objective, and the first was to get the office parks renewed. The second element was to, to design them in a way that grabbed the light of this connectivity and, uh, the limitations. So that's kind of the background and the color for what we've been doing. Mr. Chairman?
Should point out, Lucas, on, on the two forty-four site, the common ownership, we have created a, a road that connects those. And we have created, through the process of encouragement, you know, with the planning, with, with applicants, we encourage them, encourage them to the point where they say, "Well, we're gonna get approval, we're gonna do it." So we did that, and we got the, the, uh, mass transit element, so you're not climbing through the bushes anymore.
Oh, that's great.
We have sidewalks that go through there. And, and so we've accomplished that with that development. Now going with the, uh, one oh three, Westchester Park Drive and the, uh, Toll Brothers, so we have a connecting road that's going to be, uh, it's gonna be approved, and, and the developers are gonna develop it first. So those two streets will have a connection, will go all the way through, so that, to get to Wegmans from one oh three, Corporate Park Drive, uh, uh, Westchester Park Drive, you now can drive your car or walk on a sidewalk and get down to Wegmans. Likewise, between the Toll Brothers, uh, Caraway and Lifetime Fitness, there'll be a path that'll be going through to, so there'll be communication there. So we're starting to get that happening, and we've also got the developers to deal with the sidewalks. And, and taking care of the, the, the roads, repaving the roads, new sewers, and all the kind of things that we really need.
Yeah, I just want to point out some of the challenges the planning board deals with. So Tom mentioned the connection, Lifetime Fitness and The Caraway. That goes through perhaps one of the only wooded areas, and these office parks are part of, some of the planning boards should be preserving this area. How do you, it's the only wooded area we have, and an area that's been renewed by office parks. So there was sort of a tension between what's more important, preserving the wooded area or making the connectivity. So with a little sense of planning, we're able to do, kind of do both, but that's the given fate that we're dealing with in many of these applications.
So, so, I, we, we got it, and we, we appreciate the, the letters that you send us, the reviews, because we take those sometimes, like in this particular case, we say, "Here, look at what the county's telling us to do," and you know what? We agree, and let's talk about it. And we, sometimes it takes months and months and months to get to the point where, where there's an agreement, but, you know, we're not giving up on it. So the developers are, you know, lining up and, and, and take care of it. But the Manhattanville Road connection to Corporate Park Drive is a non-starter for the community, so I, I don't think we're ever gonna see that happen.
And the ironic thing is, it's a gate that's open all the time now, and you probably can drive through it anyway, and you just don't tell people about that.
On the point of deliveries to Wegmans, with the truck deliveries off of six eighty-four, there was discussion early on about creating a, an exit for them to come directly into, you know, Corporate Park Drive area, but Wegmans didn't want to do it, and we weren't gonna foot the bill, and I don't think the area state would.
And that's another challenge, we're talking about DOT's involvement in this case as well, it's not just the county, or the town, so there's a lot of new parts facilitating maybe changes to access the area.
But it would seem that's the one thing, if you could just have the trucks off of six eighty-four go directly in and out, and not have to drive all the way around and through the streets, it would be a win-win.
There's no doubt that you have the negation.
And not allow them to go up Manhattanville, you know, not allow them to do that.
Right, that's... Again, as I said before, it's likely that one street should be developed, it's been short a little bit, I think people will recognize that the obvious advantage is to make some of those differences.
Great.
Hi, good morning, yeah, my, I'm Craig Leir from the Westchester, um, Department of Public Work and Transportation. Spend large amounts of my day doing operations planning for the line of business. So I guess my question is, and first, I want to also commend Lucas, that was a great presentation, and he encapsulated all the issues regarding transit and transportation very well in there. From, from our standpoint, we are essentially ready, if the time came, if that connection on Manhattanville Road were ever opened, can we understand the inherent challenges and, and the local oppositions doing it? But in order to put in a, a bus that goes through it, we know how that can be done. I guess my short-term question is, are there any, is it an absolute, um, incommissable, um, situation, or are there any potential exceptions for transit for B-line buses specifically to be able to ever use that connection? Because doing so would enable us to be able to solve the problem that Lucas spoke about, which is the, the one-way pair issue of our bus stops and the challenges with access. We have a route that, but currently, our route twelve, which currently traverses Westchester Avenue and then turns up Kennel, Kennelworth Road, um, and essentially circles around the area. There's not a lot of activity there, and it's also served by other bus, bus stops. We would be able to send that route through Manhattanville Road to be able to provide that direct access to that entire side without having people have to cross over. So that's essentially my question, is that, if, please, do you have any, any possibility that that would be any exception?
And this is your answer, this is your answer to that.
So there's three parties at this agreement? Related properties, which is this office building, the town of Harrison, both of whom would make this connection a priority, and the folks in Purchase, the environmental organization that protects those neighbors, and they are very well-heeled and have never budged off that position.
That's, that's...
That's exactly right, you know, and, and, but, as I said before, when their constituents want to go to Wegmans and don't want to do a twenty-minute ride to pick up a gallon of milk, they don't want to perhaps change your...
They also oppose the Toll Brothers project pretty strenuously, and, uh, it's happened, so, uh...
That's right. That's right. So, you know, they, they, many times, they, we faced many challenges. We were part of the Senate meeting after Wazoo, from that, put just about everything on there. So that's just the reality of doing business at Manhattan.
Any other comments?
Sounds more like Yakuza.
One of the issues is the...
Actually, one thing I could see is that if you did go through, it would be also tempting for a lot of people to take that as a shortcut.
That's the fear, that it's a road.
But I wonder if, instead of doing it directly, if you did it in a circuitous route, to get around all of those, if that might be better, because then people wouldn't want to take, you know, a route that went up to that one and then to the next, and then around, and then back down.
Part, part of the conversation was closing Manhattanville Road and creating a new northbound connection on the six eighty-four from Corporate Park Drive, so that you didn't get into Purchase, and the DOT had said, "We're not going to do that."
So what, what happens is the folks that live there, um, at five o'clock at night, they see what happens on, you know, Westchester Avenue. They see what happens when Pepsi lets out and Anderson Hill Road's tied up. They don't want to add to it.
But it's a cut-through, and we have the same thing at White Plains on Westchester Avenue, and, up in the back over there, and we block the road off. It's a cut-through, and the neighbors do not want it.
Yeah, and those cut-throughs can be very dangerous, too, but I'm wondering if there was something that just went around that, you know, if, if it was sufficiently curvy and circuitous.
Yeah, but when planners look at this, there's a million solutions. It's not, it's not all our issue here, this is a full, full... This is a political issue. I believe we should consider that, and that was a question.
Well, thank you very much. I think it's great. This is probably the first and maybe hopefully many where we can interact with the municipal planning board and the county planning board and.
I think the county planning letters are often useful, they're often surprising, but when there's flavor to them for our planning boards, I think that's a great thing. The more you do with this, I think it's a wonderful thing for just so the boards that you're interacting with understand what the issues are and what we're coming from.
Well, that's nice to hear. I'm not sure we always get that response. But it's great. And this is certainly, it's an area of the county that's crucial to the town.
And I just want to offer one other thing to the board, so while we focus on the tier drop, it's expanding. So we have developers coming to us, uh, in areas outside of the tier drop right now with proposals, including significant change of use proposals. So once we're outside of the tier drop, it's a very different sort of volume.
Also along Westchester Avenue, the county road.
Just wanted to note, I'd like to, we did have actually invited Liv and Dylan, the regional director of the DOT, to join us today. And unfortunately, he could not join us for today, but he will actually be our director of line meeting. So if there's, you guys are certainly welcome to come back and join with them. But he will be joining us to talk about what the state's plans are for improvement in Westchester, so.
Again, thank you so much for coming. And I think, again, providing the context and the background is important for us. Sometimes the materials that get sent, you know, don't necessarily, you know, it's a giant EIS that, you know, may not indicate these subtleties, particularly, you know, dealing with neighbors and, and stuff like that. So it really does, does help us and hopefully we can work together. It's good for the town, it's good for the county.
Appreciate you, Mike.
Thanks again.
Good.
We have just a few more minor things to discuss. First is the census update.
Okay, so just a quick update on where we are as far as department preparations for the 2020 census. When we last spoke, remember that was up at Chappaqua Crossing over the summer. We're now less than a year away from the 2020 census reference date, that's April first, so eleven months away. So if you remember the, the different technical programs that the department is involved in, we completed Luca review last summer, we reviewed over three hundred thousand addresses in the county. The program that's basically wrapping up right now is called PSAP, and that stands for Participant Statistical Areas Program. So if you remember, we talked about census geographies, you know, census blocks, block groups and census tracts. So every ten years, we have to update those geographies. In Westchester, we are a mature suburb. We don't have a lot of rapid population shifting, so there's typically not a lot going on with PSAP. The Census Bureau has proposed very few changes. Here's an example in the city of Peekskill. The Census Bureau proposed that two block groups in Peekskill be split in half. So the, if you see right here, this block group's sort of just northwest or southwest of downtown Peekskill. And then this one out here, we can zoom in so you can see where this proposal was. So this, this is split on, this is South Street right here and Smith Street running north-south here. So we reached out to municipalities, tried to get any feedback from anyone who, you know, would be impacted by these changes. And this is a good example where in the, the city of Peekskill, reaching out to them, they actually said, no, we don't like these changes. So we will be suggesting to the, the Census Bureau that they not change these two block groups. The reason for this suggestion was, the Census Bureau basically said, these are a little larger than the ideal for a, for the size of a block group. So a block group is basically between six hundred and three thousand people and between two forty and twelve hundred housing units. So there is a lot of leeway as far as the minimum and maximum sizes of block groups. They are still within those minimum and maximum. They're a little large, they're on the larger side, they're larger than the Census Bureau would like them to be. But I would assume the Census Bureau will accept this, this recommendation that we're making. Another example, census designated places are another geography that the Census Bureau creates. And basically, it's a way to create a, a statistical entity where there's no political entity. So in New York State, as we all know, New York State actual legal divisions are cities, towns and villages, but there are hamlets or postal designation areas that are not actually municipalities. So, so in New York State, these are often designated as CDPs. So the, the town of Newcastle actually took a lot of great interest in their CDPs. They wanted to create a new CDP for Millwood. So you can see right here, this is what it looks like entering this, the, the boundaries of the new CDP using property tax parcel boundaries. And they also wanted to modify the CDP for Chappaqua. So we will be submitting both those changes. But basically, that's it as far as PSAP. Nothing really too controversial, which, again, that's sort of a good thing. We want sort of a, a maintenance of statistical areas over the years so we can compare statistical areas over the years. If you have a lot of changes between censuses, it creates problems because you're trying to compare an area, but you don't have comparable areas anymore. So just to run through where we are, sorry, this might be a little hard to see, but, you know, the, the effort of preparing for the 2020 census really actually began in 2011 for the Census Bureau. And if you look down here at the bottom, it won't really start wrapping up until 2023. So it's not just one or two years, it's really a, an all-out effort for, for the Census Bureau at least. We are currently, if you see right here, between January and, and August of 2019, so the Census Bureau is talking about opening area census offices. We will be opening a census office, an area census office in Peekskill that will cover Westchester and Putnam County. Just a reminder, so ninety-five percent of households in the U.S. will receive a census invitation in the mail. So because this is the first decennial census where you will have the option of responding online, and the Census Bureau really wants as many people as possible to respond online, you will receive an invitation to respond. You will not actually receive an actual census form, a census questionnaire at first. Five percent of households will actually receive a, a door-to-door door-knocker who will leave the invitation with them.
In terms of the actual form, when you get the invitation, can you request a form?
Yes, yeah, and in fact.
Do you have to go online to request it?
No.
I got mine automatically.
Well.
No, they're not going to send them automatically now.
Well, not.
Ted.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if we look at this, this.
Next year.
Yeah. Well, the ACS.
You might be getting ACS questionnaire.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I got. I got that.
So, so if you look at this schedule right here, the plan is to send out four different batches. So some people will start receiving their, their letter on March twelfth, some people won't receive it until March twentieth. But basically, what happens is if you have not responded by the fourth mailing, they will finally just send you the questionnaire in the mail.
Responded, but if you haven't responded by email?
Online, yeah, yeah. Or, or over the phone. You can still respond over the phone, you can call them up.
But if you haven't, if you don't want to do either of those, you will automatically get a written.
Yeah. So the idea is, you know, in doing the end-to-end test in Rhode Island, most people did respond online. Obviously, you know, not everybody has the internet at home, so that's a, a challenge. So people have all these different options for responding. They can go to a public library, you know, that's, that's why it's important that we, we work with all these partners. But the, the area census offices, important to note, are not actually places where people will go to fill out their census. So, so what's different this time around is that, actually even the, the workers in the field for the Census Bureau will not actually have to go to the area census offices anymore. They'll be working remotely with tablets, walking around their neighborhoods and their communities. So the effort is really to, to really reach people where they are and, and use new technology to be able to, to allow people to respond in as, as many manners as possible. So going back to the process of how we get to 2020, how we identify everyone, obviously the, the biggest partner for the Census Bureau is the U.S. Postal Service. So they are already receiving updates of addresses all the time. So the master address file that we reviewed as part of Luca is already also being updated by the, the U.S. Postal Service. The, the, the progress on Luca involved last year, when over the summer, we reviewed all those, those addresses, but they will come back to us for review again in August. So the Census Bureau will tell us, we accepted or rejected all of these, and we'll have yet another opportunity to see if that was a mistake or not. So, so this is an interesting survey that the Census Bureau conducted, looking at barriers and motivators. So CBAM stands for Census Barriers and Motivators Survey. So, you know, to try to look at, at exactly how we can get people more motivated, what the reasons are people don't want to participate in the census. So kind of some concerning statistics when you, you see the fact that in 2008, of the people they, they surveyed, eighty-six percent said they were likely to respond to the census. And then in the 2010 census, only seventy-six percent actually responded to that questionnaire. In 2018, only two-thirds said they were likely to respond to the census. So, you know, kind of a concerning statistic and, and sort of, you know, like why it's really important that we, we really do all we can to ensure that we get a complete count. Looking at the, the reason people don't respond to the census, a lot of people just don't know why it's important, they don't really understand, you know, this quote, isn't that like the people that want to know like everything, you know? So, you know, there, there's a lot of confusion about exactly why this would be important to an individual. You know, if you look at some of the knowledge gaps right here, if you see the second to last right here, to determine how much money communities get from the government. Only forty-five percent of people surveyed were correct in, in identifying the Census Bureau as being, you know, really important for, you know, their communities getting their fair share of funding, because it's based on their population. So, and, and even if you see the breakdown, there are some differences as far as Black and African-American, Asian and Hispanic respondents having a, a lower percentage of correct responses there. So potential barriers identified by this, this survey, apathy, people are like, what's in it for me? Concerns about data confidentiality, you know, people don't understand that this is actually confidential data that will be, not be given to other federal agents, will not be, no, no individually identifiable data will be given to anyone. They don't trust the government in general though, and they don't see personal benefits to filling this out. There's a very abstract feeling of, well, yeah, it would be nice, but me personally, what's in it for me? People don't see that. So that's why this is always difficult. And this was interesting to look at, you know, what are those public services that are important? And health and hospitals, fire departments and police departments were, were some of the, the top priorities there. So, and, and of course, all that funding comes from the, the population determined in the census. So again, the big picture conclusions, you know, there are a lot of knowledge gaps, there are barriers, but we really need to hit on those, those motivators. People being motivated by the idea that like, you know, your local hospital, fire department, school, all that funding is, is based on census data. So now just to look at what we call hard-to-count areas in Westchester, there are different ways to, to measure a hard-to-count area. So basically, these are the areas where, in this instance, this is just the male response rate in 2010. So areas of Westchester where we saw the lowest male response rates in 2010 can give us a picture of, of the areas we really need to focus on in 2020 and really need to, to ensure that, that these areas are, are counted. Overall, the municipality with the lowest response rate was Mount Vernon. There are five block groups where less than half of households in 2010 returned their session, their census questionnaires. So really, you know, Mount Vernon has a, a large concentration of population who, who we really need to focus on getting out in 2020 if, if we want to beat those response rates. Sort of, you know, stepping back to a, a wider view of southern Westchester, you can see a lot of areas sort of all over Yonkers and, you know, not, not just concentrated in and around southwest in the downtown, but sort of all, all areas of Yonkers. And Yonkers being the largest city in the county, it has the largest absolute hard-to-count population, about twenty thousand households. But you can also see it all over in New Rochelle. You can even see, might be a little hard to see on the screen, but right around downtown Bronxville, that's actually an area with a somewhat lower hard-to-count population. So, you know, it's, it's all sorts of different factors. And that, you know, that area of downtown Bronxville might have a lot of rental apartments. And even though it might be a very affluent population, we know that renters are far less likely to answer the census than homeowners. And a lot of it is just, you know, oh, I'm only here for a couple of years, I don't really feel invested in this community, you know, I, I'm moving somewhere else next year, I don't really care. You know, so, so the, the barriers are sort of all over the place. Going up to the central part of the county, you can see right here, areas of Elmspur. Again, I, I believe there are some apartment buildings in that, that area in the sort of panhandle of Elmspur on, on the left, very, very hard-to-count area right there. And then, then also this area to the north of White Plains, you know, this is the North White Plains area of the town of North Castle. Again, a, a very hard-to-count community right there. And then looking at Porchester and Rybrook. Rybrook overall, eighty-one percent, so not too bad. But the block group that borders Porchester was down below sixty-five percent. So there are variation between communities. And sort of the, the most extreme is this far north end of Yorktown, the Jefferson Valley area. This is, you know, sort of squeezed into the upper end of the county, right, right next to Putnam County, had a very low response rate despite the fact that Yorktown overall had a relatively high response rate. So there are variations between block groups, between communities. So that's it as far as hard-to-count areas. But next steps for, for the department going forward, the new construction program will be coming up in June. This involves the, the county getting our chance to update the Census Bureau and work with municipalities to ensure that all the new construction that will be completed over the next year is included. So imagine you have a new apartment building that's literally opening on, you know, March first or April first, we need to make sure that that's included. And that's sort of some, some of the last steps. So the, the Census Bureau actually already has a program where they ask each municipality to send them their building permits every month. So this is actually a great opportunity for us to work with municipalities to update them on that as well. Some municipalities send it every month, some municipalities send it very sporadically. And that building permit data actually, you know, filters its way into all sorts of other data products and census data products. So it actually does impact funding as well. So Luca follow-up will be in August. So that's, again, as I mentioned, our opportunity to review those Luca updates that the Census Bureau accepted or, or denied. And then lastly, the Complete Count Committee. So the, the county executive has appointed members of the Complete Count Committee. We had our first meeting last month, our next meeting will be Thursday. So any questions or comments?
Yeah, what type of activities would be put in place to work with places like Mount Vernon? What, what, that may be different than, than other areas?
Yeah, so, so, you know, the, the Complete Count Committee will be meeting on Thursday and we'll actually be showing them these, these same areas and talking about local organizations, talking about community-based groups, immigrant groups, faith-based organizations, getting people involved. You know, the idea is you want to reach people through people that they already trust, you know, because sometimes people are, you know, not, don't have a lot of faith in the federal government, but, you know, they have someone in their community who they trust. So it's really about reaching out and making those connections with those local groups, for sure.
But also, the Census Bureau, who Ted and I met with last week, is strongly encouraging, if you know somebody that may be interested in being a census taker, even if they work full-time, they're looking for people who. full-time, they're looking for people who will be available on the evenings and weekends to be able to go into the communities, into those local communities. So I'm sure in Mount Vernon, they're going to be looking to hire a lot of local people so that the people know them and understand and might better respond for them to be able to go in and do that. They are looking to hire hundreds of people. Again, they don't need to go to the Peekskill office, that's just where their paperwork is going to get done. But they are looking to hire lots and lots of local people to be able to assist them with these hard-to-count areas. So all the jobs are being posted online, they're really actively looking already. We are going to start the Complete Count Committee this Thursday with a discussion of these hard-count areas to start looking at, like, we know Jefferson Village is in Yorktown. There's a large, very large senior housing complex, over a thousand units. That may be very well why this area is considered hard-to-count. Maybe the seniors didn't necessarily know, you know, how important it was, or just didn't, they lost it, who knows, you know?
I also think it's very, I don't know if I've, did you see the application yet, but is it very challenging to do? I just know that some people.
The new one, nobody's seen it yet.
People get up on it. You know, you found it and you're like, the hell with this. And I know that for many people.
Yeah, could turn people off.
You know, you'd be hired.
Right. So we're going to take the Complete Count Committee, it's going to take a hard look at each of these block groups to see what's in those, what's the, what's the population in that, you know, is it a lot of multifamily building? What's there so that we might be able to identify specific for each of these areas what might work best? We're also going to start taking a look at dates and events, like all the ethnic festivals at the Kinsaco Dam all summer long, health fairs, things of that sort, where we might be able to get people, maybe able to man a table, and just start to get the word out about Census 20 coming up. April 1st may seem like it's a far away away, but, you know, we're down to not even eleven months anymore, right? So the more people just hear it over and over again that it's coming, you know, that also can generate a possibility of better and increased response.
One nice tool that they're planning, because people will be responding online, the idea is we will be able to see response rates in real time, starting from when the questionnaires go out. So we'll be able to see in real time, oh, hey, this neighborhood down here, this census block group down here, has a very low response rate, but there's still time, let's go out and really push hard in this neighborhood and get people to respond. So that's sort of one of the advantages of everything being digital and everything being online, to be able to see.
Do you know that if you haven't responded and someone comes knocks on your door and they've got this, they're going to put it into their computer, and you say, leave me a printed version, will they have them to distribute and not just be able to enter into their?
That's a good question.
They did, they told us that they were going to have the tablets with them, so that they'd be able to ask you, they're just the questions just answered, you know?
I know, but suppose you don't want to answer it into the tablet, but you say, if you leave me a hard copy, I'll send it back.
Yeah.
I think if they show up at your house, you're beyond the response time to do the hard copy.
Yeah.
And one of the other interesting things that they did tell us was some of the households or some of the population that is most difficult to count is very young children, children under five who are not in school yet. They said that those are very, people don't think that they count. And yet, that's extremely important, exactly, but some households, all right, just don't believe that the young children, because they're not in school yet, were important.
Yeah, the other issue is college students.
That's right.
College students who are, you know, in college on April 1st, who are not living in their parents' house, are not counted in their parents' house. They are counted where they are on April 1st.
And so getting the colleges to respond, there's an entire level of outreach that they have to do to households, to hospitals, to the colleges, to all of the group homes, to make sure that, to the jail, you know, to make sure that those responses are counted and accurate as well.
Yeah, and I think also going to be critical what happens with the federal lawsuit.
Yes.
You know, immigrant communities, right now, there's a tremendous amount appear.
Right.
And so this is a very, you know, big issue that's starting now, that, you know, the community needs to be informed. I actually spoke with NASA for lawsuit last night about this. And one of the ideas, but we don't know if it's possible, is for no one to answer the citizenship question. She said that she's going to look into, you know, to see if that would disqualify the whole form.
What we were told is that if you don't answer all of the questions, you're, as long as essential information is there, that your census will still count.
Yeah, she was skeptical. She said she was going to look into it.
So we had a conversation with the director of the census who came to the county official office, and we were loaning the gracious enough to allow some of the county executive staff to come and meet. And we also had Ted involved representing the county planning. And we did ask a question in terms of the, when you're filing online, I asked, what if we do not answer one particular question, I don't specifically say the citizenship question in general? And what the director said was that you will be prompt, you know, to alert you that not all of the questions have been answered, but they will accept. So even though we're missing one particular question, they will still accept.
So you go back and just hit reset, then?
Correct, he'll say you're missing.
It won't kick you out.
Correct.
It won't kick you out, okay?
Yes, go on, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just have, out of curiosity, I'm wondering what Peekskill would want if it divided, but also wish there's someplace to contact if you are a community group who's interested in or feel that you could be helpful in, like Southwest John Furso.
Yeah, you know, I think getting, you know, that message out there to the Complete Count Committee, to the county's Complete Count Committee would be great. So, yeah, I mean, we can talk offline about, you know, how to get involved, for sure.
Okay, we are at ten o'clock. I think we're going to pass on, sorry, you keep getting passed over.
That's the purpose of that.
Kathleen, did you want to say something, an update?
No.
Anybody that feels that the census gets free tickets to play.
How free they are, right?
Is that true?
It's a year from now.
I said, if Starbucks gets a card and everyone would be.
I tell you, and free food, and it'd be.
Yeah, no, it is that.
But what you said, Norman, is so true. They don't trust a lot of people. And somebody like me, Corbin, that has actually been an influence in the senior citizens, she tells me to do something.
Right.
So that's just one little piece of huge. But anyway, just real quickly, just on Playland, I'm sure you've either been reading, watching, whatever. The bottom line for anybody that is really interested is that this county executive has really, really gotten heavily involved in promoting and helping and working, which is really wonderful for the department as well for the county. He had a very strong press event yesterday at Playland. What he really concentrated on yesterday was just talking about the positive things that are coming. There's not a ten more, a new rise or anything like that yet, but capital projects will continue with the basic things of just having a town night, a couple of more concerts that we had, you know, just to do more than what we've done in the past. So he's very supportive, that's been a positive. As far as standard amusement, people also probably read, he's been pretty vocal and strong about the fact that they really aren't the right avenue for working with the county. And needless to say, without going too deep, it doesn't end easily, it doesn't be, it doesn't just, okay, fine, great. So I can't tell you what's going to happen, all I know is that at this stage of the game, he has been quite vocal on that, you know, he'd like to move forward with other scenarios. The other big issue, which will be discussed on Thursday, another press event on Thursday, he wanted to separate them, is all the safety and health concerns. And seriously, and I'm not just covering myself, being the commissioner of the department, the issues that have been brought up in the newspaper, the food scenario and stuff like that. It was over a year ago, it was also done during the time that the park wasn't open, it was checked out in March. Obviously, things are a little bit different when we're not there. No question how important health and safety are to all of us. Some of us that have lived through some of the issues that have happened years ago are a nightmare, you never want to live through anything like that again, but that could happen in any part of my world, with the fifty facilities. So, but I think it's real important, and to close, the health department, which any of you, if you know, Pete DeLucia and Shalita Ammer and everybody that works under them, they are pit bulls for a good reason. And they have been out to the park year after year after year, checking and whatever was questioned, whether, you know, screen wasn't fully shut or whatever, was addressed immediately. So coming out of their mouth yesterday, which they will certainly talk on Thursday, is that they have never been at any scene, any grievous situations out there, crazy health scenarios. So that's a good thing. He will be, I believe Peter is coming, Pete DeLucia, he will say what he has to say. As far as the safety, and I'm telling you, and you can print this call, as commissioner of the park, overseas the park, I would never, ever open the facilities if I could get on a ride and fly, you know, and end up in Hugh's front yard. Never. And neither would the county executive or any of the administration. The rides are checked every single day. And the state labor world comes in and checks every single ride. But why we don't open at nine o'clock in the morning is that from six to twelve, we have ride operators and security people that check every single ride. It's unbelievable to watch what they do, what they do. So I can tell you, you know, the facility needs help, lots of capital issues have to be addressed or in the process of being addressed. But as far as the safety of the rides and the health and cleanliness, and Colin Hart is still putting questionnaire there, running everything, everybody is, and I was just out there yesterday, I mean, the park, it looked to be on a daylight yesterday, it's actually gorgeous, and the boardwalk is beautiful. So with the help of the county executive really pushing hard and everybody else that's involved, Playland will open Saturday, I believe we get invites, Saturday we open, hopefully.
Pier's reopened.
Pardon?
The pier's reopened.
Yes, the pier is reopened through wonderful help of the BPW and T. We open May 11th, which is Saturday, if it rains out, it goes to Sunday. Right now, it looks like Saturday is better than Sunday, so I can tell you, short of a tornado, we open, we close. We don't, you know, we don't want to move it to Sunday. But if you have any questions, feel free to ask. But overall, once again, we are running it in 2019. What happens after that, who knows?
Thank you, Catherine.
Sure, thank you.
An update. Okay, that's pretty much the agenda. I really think that the interaction with the Yonkers.
Wow. Okay, we'll get the Yonkers department up here.
They should be next, maybe, but the interaction with the Harrison Planning Board, I think, was very fruitful. I mean, it's nice to hear that our letters are read and paid attention to, and there was, I think, a good interaction. So maybe that could be the start of more interactions with local planning boards. And with that, we can accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Host. Thank you, everybody.